...nineteen ninety-five to order and everybody rise. Congratulations to the five. Congratulations to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome those who are viewing this, this meeting on channel fifteen this evening. And start off tonight with the minutes from the previous meeting of November twentieth, nineteen ninety-five.
Motion.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone outside the rail that would like to speak before the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor. On the appointment to the Rutland Housing Authority. Motion's in order to remove from the table, I believe.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to, uh...
To include the ballot box.
Motion been made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We are voting for the appointment of Lloyd A. Kelly, Jr., at one seventy-two Row Street.
You're telling you, you're a lawyer, right?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Please note my extension not being a lawyer for the Housing Authority.
So noted. Lay a motion of eight yes and one no. Pete Kelly is appointed to the Rutland Housing Authority. Moving on to the agenda, the letter from Rutland Area Visiting Nurse Association be placed on the ballot at the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars, which is the same as last year.
Second.
Motion been made in second to place on the ballot.
Please note my extension for voting.
So noted.
Mr. Chairman.
Mine also, I'm on the board.
Okay, any others? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We hold. Reports from standing committees. Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charter in ordinance committee met November twenty-seventh. Members present were Alderman Stafford, Beauchamp, and Davis. Others present were City Attorney Sullivan and Treasurer Ron Graves. The first order of business was a sign permit fee. You'll have a copy on your desk. These fees deal with new signs, including replacement of signs. That's a fifty dollar application fee. Temporary signs, that's a fifty dollar application fee which carries for the one-year period of six times or sixty days. And a variance fee, which is twenty-five dollars in addition to either the one or two above, and I move for the approval.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Discussion, um, the motion. Hearing and seeing, Alderman Gill.
Um, let me just get this straight. Like number one is six, is fifty dollars per sign, not per sign, but per application. Right. What's the ten dollars down here? That's for temporary signs?
If someone has a request to use a temporary sign but not fall into the six sixty days, it would be a ten dollar application fee. It would be cheaper to pay the fifty dollar fee, but there's an option for people who may want to use a one-time temporary sign.
And how about signs that go on the building?
That is your new sign, that is your...
Under number one. So all signs are over fifty dollars per, per business?
Those are your freestanding end-building sign. And I'd just like to state that Jim Simon will be visiting businesses. He's already started that process of looking at businesses. He will be either meeting with businesspeople or sending a letter to those who are out of compliance now that the fees are, will be set by this board. Even though the ordinance has been in effect since October fourth, Jim has kind of waited for the fees to be in place. So especially with the temporary signs, that's probably got the most issue that he'll be dealing with within the next couple of weeks.
One question. Chairman, on a variance request, twenty-five dollars in addition to either one or two above, is that simply a request for the variance and if it's denied...
Then they would pay the fee.
They wouldn't, okay.
Right. Might, might pay the fee if a variance is denied?
Yes, that, that's the application in order for the...
To the board, to the zoning board.
No, it goes to the building inspector. The building inspector will determine whether or not a variance could be created.
But they still have an appeal goal. Do they still appeal that process to the zone?
No, I believe that goes to court.
To court.
So what you're saying, they pay the twenty-five dollars no matter what? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Other questions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The second order of business was a discussion regarding the purchasing agent. Treasurer Graves addressed the committee with a purchasing agent outline and the audit information from the schools and city government. A meeting was scheduled for twelve-one in the chambers to meet with Bill Gravo and George Means. The third order of business was drug and alcohol testing policy for CDL-qualified employees. A copy was given to the committee for review and comment. The issue will be further discussed at our next charter and ordinance meeting to be held December eleventh. Charter and ordinance also met December first. Members present were Alderman Stafford, Clifford, and Davis, absent with Alderman Beauchamp. Others present were City Attorney Sullivan, Treasurer Graves, Alderman Caserino, George Means, auditor for city schools, city end schools, excuse me, and Bill Gravo, a purchasing agent for CVPS. The discussion involved the question of the purchasing agent, whether to join schools and city under one purchasing agent or whether to continue to be separate but improve existing systems and item shares. Mr. Gravo and Mr. Means shared their expertise with the committee and both felt that improved savings were inevitable. Attorney Sullivan discussed the proposed charter changes that would be necessary if one purchasing agent was their goal. My motion would be that Treasurer Graves has requested the Charter and Ordinance Committee to solicit professional services for an RFP study for a market survey of the existing systems. What monies are we losing now and also like items that could be shared generically? The Charter and Ordinance Committee will review the RFP wording and I so move.
Second.
Second. Motion been made in second. Discussion, questions?
I think most of it was covered in the Rutland Herald. I think that we were here approximately two hours, there's a lot of good discussion about how the process works now. I think we put a majority of our items, both city and schools, out to bid. The concern was, how do we put it out to bid? A lot of it is education within our department heads, that they are very specific about what their needs are when they request a bid to be put out, whether it's a fire truck or whatever. And George Means and Bill Gravo were very, very good about giving us their expertise and felt that it was probably the most responsible thing to do is look at the existing, existing systems now, find out where our problems are, what we need to improve, and that would also lead us to the point of making the decision of a joint purchasing agent. So we thought that was the best way to go. The RFP, even though it's very specific about what we requested, the first step will be to put out the proposals to see what the cost will be and it will come back to us. Because Mr. Means and Mr. Gravo had no real idea of what the cost would be. That cost will be shared also with the school. They have agreed to do so.
Percentage?
Right. I mean if it's...
Fifty, fifty, sixty-four?
If it's a five thousand dollar cost and I have no clue, then it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars each.
Chairman, I imagine there was some kind of discussion as to whether or not, you know, we want to expend the money for a study or whether we might be able to do it in-house using the expertise of Ron, Bill, and George Means?
Actually, there, there is no expertise in-house. Because of the school system being such, such a separate entity, even George Means, who does the audit for both, didn't feel he had the expertise to do a professional purchasing agent look over and felt that we should solicit professional services. They felt, there's a lot of discussion. I think they both felt very strongly that there are savings there, savings will exist. Mr. Gravo also made a statement that if we did go to joint purchasing agent, there may be an initial cost upfront to reorganize and restructure, but felt the savings were there. So I think it's, I think it's beneficial to spend, I mean, I, I think we have to be sensible on how, how much we spend for the RFP. And that's what we're doing, is soliciting that proposal to see what that cost will do to have this market study done.
So we are, so we are going to have some...
But we're going, we have to be specific in the market study because we have to tell this professional service what we're looking for, so we can get a, a good cost.
Alderman Caserino.
Yeah, I also think that we're afraid of, if we go ahead and put it on the ballot without having this, and then sort of like putting a cart before the horse. And we could, we could be told by the voters to have one purchasing agent, then we all be sitting here twiddling our thumbs trying to figure out how we're going to do it and, and why we need it.
Frank?
Has, have the school expressed any thoughts, one way or the other, about their desire to have one or two?
Um, actually, I think that there's, I should, let's see how I put this. The school, I think, has been very cooperative as far as getting the information to us, willing to share the cost. I'm not sure that they feel that, that a joint purchasing agent is going to work, but they're willing to follow that step through to see where the savings could be. I think they're more inclined to look at two separate purchasing agents, but trying to share more like items and be more cost-effective that way.
Alderman.
Is there any concern, I mean, you would probably know this from talking to George Means and, and Bill Gravo, that there may be, there may not be enough companies out there have an interest in the work to, to get decent RFPs, or what was the feeling there?
Actually, they felt that, that that would be very easily acceptable, that, that there were people out there who would do this in a heartbeat and that we should have this study. Actually, I requested that this be done as soon as possible, that the information is gathered as soon as possible and is brought back to the committee, because I would like this to be completed before my term is completed in March. So this is, this is resolved to some degree.
Do they have any ideas what companies might be interested?
They felt, no. Well, Mr. Gravo and Mr. Means are going to sit down with Ron and write up the wording for the market study, especially Bill Gravo, because he does it on a fairly frequent basis, and give him an idea of what services are out there and send them out and get the best proposal.
Alderman Stafford and then Alderman Centauski.
From what I could gather, the school department was more than willing to go along and share the expenses and the information that they needed for this particular study.
Right, absolutely.
Frank?
Has Chris had a chance to report on the charter changes that would be necessary?
Well, we discussed that at the meeting, basically that we know we have to do a charter change. We discussed having to remove the superintendent as the designated purchaser for the schools.
Yep.
And also, it depends on the role that we, we play for the purchasing agent. It was very clear that the purchasing agent, whomever it be, whether it's two separate or one joint, needed to have some independence, needed to be able to say no to a request, to look for more generics, to have that ability to build up just the, the people that they can deal with, find out what's out there for marketing. We talked about trying to keep it as non-political as possible. So we were discussing possibly changing in some wording necessary under the charter for purchasing agent. And depending on where we go, Chris will have to further research it, and Chris can certainly address some of the issues that we discussed on Friday.
Well, there, there's really many alternatives that this could take place, as you're talking, the committee seems to be talking about an independent purchasing agent. And the question is, who controls that purchasing agent and who has authority? And where, who does that purchasing agent answer to? And before we get into any type of drafting of that type of language, I wanted to wait until the study's complete to see if a single purchasing agent is the way that the city and the school department would like to have.
It really was quite dumb, Darren, I think it was just, I, I think I, I felt good about all the, the work that I had done, just meeting with department heads and talking with our purchasing agent and just getting all that information together. And, and I personally feeling as a non-professional that our system could be improved a great deal and having that confirmed by people who are professionals and saying, yes, there are some cost savings here and we do need to move forward.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I have one more motion, Mr. Chairman, and my motion is to extend the interim position of the purchasing agent, which we hired to help out in Ron's office, and extend that to June thirtieth, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Alderman Gill.
I just have informational for you, on the community development meeting on November thirtieth at the Marble Valley Transportation District Office on Spruce Street, basically the, the bus gave us an update on where they're at and their marketing and their informational meetings have been going around to the senior housing facilities and senior groups to make sure people knew and understand what the schedules were and get their feedback on what was going on with the bus at the time. We had a very good lively discussion on what we want to see from the city, for their services for the city, and he gave us a broader picture of what the bus is doing, counting why. He talked about the Killington contract and other services he provides. He also gave us a tour of the facility and it's pretty impressive. I didn't realize it has grown that big and that many buses around the road. That's about it.
Any questions of Bill, his report?
And our next meeting is December seventh, Thursday at five fifteen. David O'Brien from Reddick will be giving us an update on John McCooler Grant and economic development issues, and Matt Stover is going to bring some issues in that needs to be taken care of at that time also. Goodnight.
Standing committee, any chair has any report? Any select committees have anything to report? Moving on.
I'm sorry, select me, move real fast. The pruning list for the transportation, for the Regional Transportation Council is still being worked on and should be decided by fifteenth, by the fifteenth of December, so goes to Montclair, and we're still working on that. They're having a committee meeting tomorrow and then the whole council will meet on the pruning list. They have a list that remains and a pruning list, as far as I'm concerned, when you're pruning something, you're actually cutting it. And technically, when they're pruning a transportation project off the list, that means you have to start at ground zero again. So there is some major, major concerns on the Rutland County level on what projects are going to stay and what projects are going to go away. Okay? So we'll keep you informed on that.
Any other select committee reports before we move on? Okay. Moving on to petitions and letters, so a letter from Eleanor Cooper requesting paving of Gleason Road. Alderman Russo.
When can motion be referred that to Public Works Commissioner and I'll explain.
All right. Motion been made in second.
I've had two people, I know the town residents calling me about the road. They got a point. I mean, the, the gas in their cars is purchased within the city and they shop within the city and the road's needed repair for quite a while. When one of them called, I got ahold of DPW and they went right up with coal patch and filled in the potholes. But I just thought it'd be nice for the DPW committee, or the DPW to know that it's here and maybe they could get it on the list next year to make a nicer entrance into the city for the people in that area.
You referred to the mayor, too. They kind of look at those requests together, see them and...
Good suggestions. Thank you.
May I amend the motion and include the mayor? Is any discussion, other discussion of the main motion?
Just have a question, it didn't seem to be clear to me in this letter, is this property that she is talking about, is it in the city or in the town?
Yeah. It's a sharp piece, two, where the transfer station driveway, figures enough thousand feet from there, that's city-owned.
All right.
All in favor of the motion, refer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The letter from Reddick, report.
Will receive and file.
Second. Okay, and this is going to be taken up next, or this Thursday, right, Bill?
Yes.
David, that's my little one later.
Okay. That's correct, we're taking that up at that meeting.
Okay, so this will be taken up on Thursday, uh...
The seventh.
The seventh.
At five fifteen.
That's here, Bill.
Yeah, it might be in here because of my...
Okay, it's in City Hall.
It's City Hall.
Okay. Okay, motion to receive and file, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Motion from the rail crossing traffic signals from Agency of Transportation. Ira Earl would certainly be one person.
I think it's been copied to everybody else.
Oh, yes, you're right, Sharon, it has. The mayor, attorneys, Department of Public Works.
I'll move to, I'll move to send a copy to Ira Earl.
I think someone needs to respond, don't they?
Yeah, with, with a motion that's, that the response is made, I don't think we should assume that, you know what I mean? They're looking for a response and that a lot of everybody's been...
I indicated, it's going to the police chief and he'll probably bring it up at a traffic committee, or it's also going to the Warren Connor, the commissioner of Public Works, and they will take care of that internally, I believe, to respond to the letter as to traffic studies that we have on going.
Okay, so we can assume then, at this time, it is safe to assume that somebody's going to...
That it should be taken care of by one of the...
It should be taken... Okay, yeah.
And I can follow up on that as well.
Yes.
Also, the Regional Transportation Council, we're dealing with this, they talked about this the other night. They are going to respond as a council on this. Apparently, this is going to be a major problem. They're having some difficulties and it's in court now with a bunch of towns on who's responsible for the, for the maintenance of these crossings, who's in charge of maintenance of the light? And the state says it's not theirs and the railroad says it's not theirs, so we're going to go to court, and that's why a couple of these railroad crossings have been held up. So we are definitely working on it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Draft discharge permit, number six in the packet.
Will receive and place in file.
Second. Motion been made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Act two fifty, entry appearance, B A N R.
Will receive and place in file.
Second. Motion been made in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Michael Skiru Resort, Act two fifty to transfer one thousand three hundred and sixty acres to the US government.
Mr. President, we have this issue in committee already with, between the city and the US force, if I remember. I'd like to refer that to Community Development Committee also. Since we're already, it's already a committee, attorneys are working on it, but they're, they're still working on it, that's why there's no information yet, so.
Okay.
And that's part of, I believe, am I right?
The same action, Chris?
Is this part of the same process?
The same.
This is, you can send it to committee and then it can be fully discussed in the committee. I think that's probably the easiest, but this shouldn't have an effect on the negotiations the city has had.
Okay. So what do you, do we really need to take any action on, in your opinion, or are we just filing?
No, you guys can receive and file.
Received and filed as a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. McDonald's notice of Act two fifty application.
Will receive and place in file.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Motion to go in board of control commissioners.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. First one is fine for tobacco violation.
Will receive and place in file.
Received and filed. Motion been made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Second issue is a violation letter from local Seames Pub and Stewart Shop.
Received and please don't file.
Both of them?
Both.
Okay. Motion been made in second, both these letters received and filed, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have one other request for a license before us. It is for one sixty-one State Street. It is called Stepping Stones Cafe.
I would move for approval.
With signature.
And circulate for signature.
Okay, the motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Motion to go back into regular board of...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Reports and letters from department heads to earn them this evening, unfinished business. Alderman Caserino.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have, I guess it's under unfinished business because this was sent to committee before, but I have a petition from, from neighbors on East Center Street, and they wanted us to put a traffic committee on and change it, I'm asking two ways. I also have a letter from somebody that was against changing it, so I'd like to put them both in the committee and ask that, the committee notify these people when they're going to have the traffic committee meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, refer this, these two letters to the traffic committee.
Yeah, the key people would be Mr. James Selig of fifty-three East Street, East Center Street, and Victor Sagali of, I got his attorney's number, but also on East Center Street, I don't know the exact address.
Chairman, can I just send out a motion, a request that the city clerk notify both people that the traffic commit, traffic meeting will be December fifteenth at nine AM?
What's up, Joe?
Want to have those down?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Any other unfinished business before we go into...
Mr. President.
Yes?
We sent something to the mayor's administration on parking and checklist that we wanted to have checked out, and the reason why it's not here, because the myself and the partnership representatives are going to sit down, we can go through that list, and soon as we have that meeting, we'll report back to the board.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? We are moving on to new business resolutions. Yes, Alderman Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request the Board of Finance if they would authorize a railing on the left side of the stairs here coming up. I've had some calls from people who visit City Hall and also some workers here that they would appreciate a railing on that wall, and I believe the Board of Finance can authorize a work order and payment for installation of that.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion, questions for the motion? Hearing, all in favor.
The line out of the building, it's fine?
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. New business resolution, Alderman Russo.
Uh, David, I just wanted to share with the board, when I got the letter from the Reddick today, and I'm not just picking a net, I guess it set off a trigger, this letter here said in a couple of places, we're going to need some local support, we need your support, we need your support. And I kind of drafted up a, just dictated a quick letter to maybe send to them and to send to other people, other organizations, developers, as Art Crowley and I used to call them, to just let them know that this is an anxious board to, to help do stuff. And we had a twelve-page packet, we've had several of those now this, probably, you know, in the last year. And, you know, if I say some of the things that we've worked on or remind people, we had projects, various projects, tunnels and those down in the industrial park, but tons of downtown development, uh, things brought to us. We worked on the filtration plant, we worked on the plaza, the Price Chopper, CVPS building, the state office building, there was all kinds of involvement by this board on that, the Diamond Run Mall, we had Damien Zemias in here and things we worked on, we've had the multimodal transit center, and now for the last year, we've been just kind of quiet here. I mean, it just seems that to me, and I'd like to send a letter to David and some of our other developers just to show them how anxious we are. We'd like to see some things to develop around here. And maybe too, that they'll have a beautiful list for us in the Vision 96 that's coming up. Because like I said, it's just kind of quiet. And we've, you know, we've done a lot. This board has had a lot of things come through it in the nearly four years I've been on it. And I'd just like to, we can only develop what our developers bring to us. So I'd like to make a motion, a letter be sent to David, you know, telling him that we're, we anxiously await his visit to the board and maybe any other development organizations, the community development director, even tell him, bring us some stuff to develop.
We're still looking at Vision 95, where it is.
That's a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, send a letter from you just that we thank him for him, you know, letting us know he's working on something and, you know, we anxiously await any other development. If it's along that tone, maybe send it out to some of the others. I'd just like to see if this board brought some things to work on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, Alderman Gillen.
I just want to address that since I'm involved in the manufacturing study that they have, excuse me, manufacturing survey. What they have done is picked chamber members and members from Reddick to go out door-to-door, face-to-face with the CEOs and the small business people who either produce or manufacture or service something in this county and kind of get an idea of where they're at. What kind of help do they need from government or from services or whatever? It's a very extensive survey. And I think it's the only way that we're going to learn that what the needs are and the growth, and what we're hearing from the Department of Economic Development is the growth is going to come from our existing operations, okay? And how are we going to work them through the system to make them grow? Like tunnel, moving from a small plant down to a large plant. And you're going to see more and more of that. And that's why things have been pretty quiet because we're in the middle of that survey. I think once all that information's compiled in January, they're going to bring that to us. And I'm pretty sure you're going to see some interesting stuff because I've done two already and I've learned a lot. One was a printing shop and another one was a, who makes rubber mats of some type. And they had a lot of concerns and basically had nothing to do with financing, had to do with government regulations. So, I mean, once we understand what their problems are, then we can start knocking those off the list.
Who's going to bring them to us?
Reddick.
Just Reddick? I'm talking about Reddick, I'm not picking on Reddick, but I see that you saw all these people that come in here every January and we go through this dog and pony show and all these charts and everything. And that's it. And we don't see nothing the rest of the year. That's my concern. I think probably the same as Sam's. Not Reddick, I'm sure they're doing their job, but we had other offices in here besides Reddick.
Well, they're all part of conglomerate to get these things worked out. Before you can go out there and start building something, you've got to find out what's needed first.
Sam?
And I don't, like you said, mean to make a sign of assault or attack anyone. We, it seems when I got on the board, when was it, '92, I think? You know, it seemed like there was just meeting after meeting, things going on, things in development. And I want to encourage David and the Chamber of Commerce and anyone we can that's in the development business that this board's anxious and ready to do some developing. Like I said, a 12-page packet, 33-minute meetings so far. And we've had a bunch of those in the last year. And I'm going to agree with Alderman Cassarino. We hear the development Vision 95 stuff, the charts and bar graphs and all that. And then it's been kind of a quiet year and I don't foresee anything. The multimodal transit center, we were told at the community development meeting the other night is underway. Whatever you call it, Bell and Whistle is being taken care of. The process is underway. We know where we're at with the plaza, the Price Chopper parts have been built, the Diamond Run Mall's going on. And I just want to see us get some other things and have our developers, as I refer to them, bring things to us to help us help them. And I thought a letter of some sort would be kind of nice to David and the rest of them.
Wendy?
Two things. Well, first is a comment that I think that at this stage in development in the area and specifically the city, a lot of bricks and mortar has happened at a pretty rapid pace. You're right, Sam. But at this point, I think we need to, and this is a hard thing to do, look at the engines that fuel the economy that keep those bricks and mortar open. And that's a very difficult task. When you talk about economic development in terms of, you know, trying to bring more jobs to the area, so I think that's where this region needs to focus right now. And I think by working very closely with groups like Reddick and the Chamber, we benefit ourselves in respect. Second thing I want to ask is, do we have a date for the dog and pony show? Because we should make those invitations soon.
Well, if you want to set a date, it's one here from David in the spirit of, because I think they should set the date and wait until the survey.
Well, no, a date for all of the organizations?
Right. And I want to wait until the Chamber got these things done because they may not be ready for the second meeting in January.
He would have some sense by then. I know that because he's probably got the majority of the responses back from those interviews, because I was part of that process, too. He will have, he will have enough information probably to speak about it at that time.
Reddick, I thought, I thought there was a handful more. I thought CB was in here.
Right, yeah. We want to get a smattering of organizations and agencies that has nothing to do with us, the city, right?
Yeah.
So the second meeting in January?
It's usually when we try to do it, yes.
That's not Martin Luther, yeah, winning day? So it'll be that Tuesday, okay.
If we, oh, yeah, we changed that.
Allo, Mary.
Okay.
I just want to remind this board that it took them 10 years to where you are right now because if someone had stopped and started planning, some of the board members who are on the board now have some vision to start that process. I mean, now we've got to start that engine all over again to move to the next plateau and that's where we're at. That's why things are, you haven't seen the bricks and mortar going on. Right now, we're trying to get to the next plateau.
Is that why we haven't stated a city address, though?
It kind of coincides, yeah.
Kind of goes all together.
Because I'll, 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 okay, we have a motion on the floor for a letter to be written to David, to Reddick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Any other new business resolutions, miscellaneous matter to be brought up? Alderman, motion?
Yeah, just a quick thought on the strengthening the economic vitality of the city is for, during this spending season, for people to spend their money locally. Spend it on Center Street, spend it on Merchants Row, spend it on Woodstock Avenue, spend it in the city or rural. That's the key. People are spending hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. Spend it locally. That's going to, the amount of, the amount of effect we can have, forget about, I mean, it's nice to go to Burlington, Glenn's Falls. It's nice to go to Aviation Mall. Diamond Run's a great place, but better to spend it in Rutland City. It's pro field, but that's what our job is, Rutland City. Spend it locally.
Alderman Russo.
The board's ready, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our 38-minute meeting.
All right. Just Alderman Davis.
No, that's all right. I thought we were doing something else, but I guess not.
The less commercial is paid for the motion.
Motion to adjourn is in order.
Second of all.
Made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.